All right, we'll go ahead and call this Planning Commission meeting to order this Wednesday, September 13th, 2023, at the hour of 7:00 PM here in City Council chambers. First item on our agenda tonight is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you all please rise, remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Always thank you for that. Number two on our agenda tonight is our roll call. Commissioner Hammer?
Here.
Commissioner Proctor?
Here.
Commissioner Sloan?
Here.
Commissioner Robinson?
Here.
Commissioner Jensen?
Here.
Commissioner Goachus?
Present.
Please recognize Commissioner Newell and excuse Commissioners Dunn. We also have City Council members Manzio and Hanson, staff members Mr. Agard, Mr. Hanson, and Ms. Potter joining us tonight. Number three on our agenda, I'm Chairman Hamilton, I'm also here.
Hi.
Number three on our agenda is a public hearing and recommendation on a zoning map amendment request by K. Thomas Reese to reassign the zoning for approximately .49 acres located at 215 South, 200 East from the existing zoning designation of R17 residential zone to MUG mixed-use general zone. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, Commissioners. You're familiar with this property as Mr. Reese recently went through the land use map amendment process and had the land use designation changed, but for those who may not be familiar, the rezoning affects the parcel highlighted in red on the aerial photograph. It's an existing legally non-conforming dental office, a non-residential structure. It's located on the adjacent east side of 200 East and south of 200 South. There's an LDS church to the south of it, and then the Tuilah Community Center located to the west. The property is currently zoned R17 residential, which is a single-family residential zone, and permits single-family residential uses and some two-family uses. It is not a zone that currently permits commercial uses outside of just the basic home occupations. Properties to the northeast and south are also zoned R17 with some mixed-use general zoning located to the west. As mentioned, the 90s map was recently changed in favor of reassigning this property to mixed use, the mixed-use land use designation being a designation that requires or encourages the mixed-use general and the mixed-use Broadway zoning districts. The applicant is requesting that the property be rezoned to mixed-use general in order to facilitate removing an existing legal non-conforming status to an existing non-residential structure, thus bringing it into compliance with the code and enabling greater uses for the property in regards to allowing some commercial activities as well as residential, if that was the way the applicant decided to go. This is, in staff's opinion, a good resolution to this situation, and will permit this commercial property to be utilized as commercial. And this item does require a public hearing. I did send out notices to property owners within 200 feet of the subject property, did not receive any comments or feedback from anybody, and that's what's being asked for. If the Planning Commission has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
All right, let's bring this back to the Commission for any further questions or Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for this particular And seeing no one approach, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item and bring it back to the Commission for further action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we forward a positive recommendation to the City Council for the Reese Property Zone Map Amendment request by K. Thomas Reese to reassign the zoning for .24 acres to the MUG mixed-use general zone, application number P-23-669, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated August 3rd, 2023.
Okay, I've got a positive recommendation from Commissioner Goachus. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Jensen. We'll take this to a vote. Commissioner Hammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goachus?
Aye.
I am Chairman Hamilton, I also vote aye. That one passes seven to zero. Heads up to the City Council for next action. Number four on our agenda tonight is a public hearing and decision on a conditional use permit request by Shane Stafford to authorize the use of automobile sales and rental for .18 acres of property located at 351 East Utah Avenue in the MUB mixed-use Broadway zoning district. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is the property that is requesting the conditional use permit to do automobile sales and rental. It's on the northeast corner of the intersection of Broadway and Utah Avenue. It's an existing structure and has historically been utilized as automobile repair and other automotive-related businesses. As mentioned, the property is owned mixed-use Broadway as our properties to the northeast and south, with some R17 zoning located to the west. Even though the properties to the north and to the east are zoned MUB, they are utilized as residential. And this is an enlarged aerial of the property showing the existing conditions of the site. You'll note that there is a substantial parking area located south of the building, as well as some room located on the west side of the building for some parking as well. And then an image of the site from Utah Avenue, and then an image of the site from Broadway looking south at the property. You'll see that there's some bay doors there. It's not clear whether the applicant intends to utilize the property for both automotive repair and automotive sales. I did reach out to the applicant with a couple of emails, but did not receive a response on that, so hopefully they're here and can clarify that for the Commission. However, in regards to the site itself, staff has estimated there's enough room in that parking area for 10 vehicles, and we're a little concerned that if you have 10 vehicles for display, where do customers park, where do employees park? And if there's automobile repair going on there, what happens to the vehicles that are waiting pickup by the owners? Again, I wanted clarification from the applicant, but didn't receive that information. So staff has added a condition to the report that all vehicle parking related to the business be maintained off-street. That is a public street, both of those roads, and so there's nothing there prohibiting a customer from parking there when they go into the building. However, we don't want to have vehicles displayed there for sale or vehicles waiting repair stored on the public street. So that's one of the conditions that I've added to the report. Yeah, that's my recommendation. So if the Planning Commission has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Okay, let's bring this back to the Commission for questions or comments from Mr. Agard.
I have a question.
Commissioner Hammer?
About the parking. Is there any designation for disabled parking, for handicap parking or anything, or would that play into these 10 spots that are available?
They would have to provide accessible parking, absolutely. That is a federal requirement that would be upheld.
I didn't really see that when I drove by, so I just wondered. Okay.
Yep.
I have a question.
Commissioner Robinson?
So Andrew, I read in the staff report about the city ordinance that requires all businesses contain their required parking off-street. So if that is already in city code, what's the necessity in putting that condition on there?
Just kind of an emphasis, just kind of a clarification. It's something that we can refer to in case there's a problem, and go right back to the conditional use permit and bring it back to the Planning Commission and say they're violating the CUP. It's just kind of a...
But if they're violating city code, isn't that more kind of serious than violating a condition?
It is, but there's two ways that that issue gets enforced. Automobile parking typically gets enforced by the police department when there's a violation on the street.
Okay.
I wanted to have a mechanism whereby the Planning Commission could enforce their CUP either through revocation or revisiting the issue.
Okay.
No other further questions or comments?
I have one.
Yes, Commissioner Goachus.
Just clarification. When you indicated that you'd put that in the staff report, it doesn't say revocation of that conditional use. Is that something you recommend that we... If we approve this tonight, do you recommend that we add that to what your staff recommendation is?
No, I wouldn't think we need to add that to the report because the conditional use permit ordinance already authorizes the Planning Commission to revoke a conditional use permit if it's in violation of the conditions. So that's just typically the way it works. If there's a violation, we bring it back to the Planning Commission. They investigate it and make a decision about what to do or how to handle it.
Thank you.
Good clarification, thank you. All right, no other further questions or comments from the Commission. Is the applicant here tonight? Okay, we're going to give you a few minutes after the public hearing, so you have a little bit more time. We'll call you up when that's done. All right, with that having been said, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this particular item. If you'd like to speak to this item, please approach the podium, write your name for the record, and then state your name for the audible record. Seeing no one approach, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this particular item and invite the applicant up to go ahead and let us know what his plans are with this property, and then if you don't mind, we're going to ask you a few questions.
Yeah, sure. Sorry, I didn't get any emails at all. I may have given the wrong email address or something, I don't know. I'm willing to answer any questions at all. You can see that picture right there, the van happens to be in the wrong spot right now. There's a handicap spot right there with a placard on there, so I have that. I don't wish to have a whole lot of cars for sale. Most of the stuff I do is vintage hot rod type of stuff, so I have five or six cars inside and plan to have three to four outside, not, you know, a plethora or anything like that. I don't plan on having 100 cars there at all. I can't handle that much. So I've put a lot of money into the building, getting it all spruced up and cleaned up, and I'm quite persnickety about having things lined up and organized, so I'm sure that there won't be issues with having too many cars there where people are parking on the street. That's certainly not my intention with that. I just wanted to be able to sell a few of the vintage cars and some of the cars that people bring to me that they don't know what to do with, to get rid of, and so forth and so on. So that's kind of what my plan is with that. I'm already doing restorations inside, and once they're done, then they leave and go back to their prospective houses, because you can't have a lot of that stuff outside because it'll get rained on and they'll get mad.
Okay. Sounds like we've got some questions.
Well...
Commissioner Goachus, go ahead.
Chairman, he didn't state his name, and I'm just wondering, because your application just says Smitty's Speech Shop. I just wondered...
I'm Shane Stafford.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's named Smitty's after the guy who got me involved in cars some, you know, 40-some-odd years ago. I hate him some days. Why cars? I should have been a dentist or something, but hands would be nicer. But yeah, so it's named after him as a kind of a tribute to him, so...
All right, do you have any other questions for the applicant?
Chairman, one more.
Yes, Commissioner Hammer?
How many employees do you have, or is it just yourself?
Right now, I'm buried and it's just myself. I plan on hiring at least three people once, like, I've been fixing it up. I've spent, ask my wife, she'll tell you the exact number, probably $50,000 restoring it. This looks, I redid the parking lot since this picture's been taken. I've redone the whole inside's equipment and everything like that. I've put gravel all where the grass is, so that's all nice now. And so I'm hoping, now that I'm starting to get some clients, and if I can get the sales thing as well, hiring at least two people almost immediately, and perhaps two more as things progress, as long as I'm financially able to do so. So probably three full-time people and then a part-time person is my ultimate plan. It's still a small shop, so I can't do a whole lot. But I've come from other restoration shops in Salt Lake and in Bellevue, Washington and stuff where we've had a staff of 50 or something, and have had hundreds of cars to work on. So I'm trying to still do that, but on a scaled-down version.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Robinson?
I drove by, Mr. Stafford, but I didn't count the parking spots.
Oh.
So how many do you figure you have? Is it jive with what Mr. Agard said?
So we have one handicap one, and then there's probably four across the front. And then honestly, I probably wouldn't even have, count 10 necessarily. One on the side of the building, and then probably three more, so what's that, four? Nine, I would say comfortably, because the cars that I have, usually you want a little more space if you back into a XKE Jaguar, then I'll have fit. So I try to keep it pretty clean and straight. I have property in Eagle Mountain where I keep my overflow, and then I have made friends here in town that are like, oh, yeah, you can park it at my house if I get too many things, I can do that. And then, of course, my ultimate plans of world domination will continue on to Barkingham Palace if things go well, and Nick will sell me the building. But that's a year out of the way. But right now, I think I have nine parking spots comfortably. Most of the cars that I work on are inside, so my car, and then three or four to sell out front, maybe.
Okay, so I'm thinking, going along with your dreams slash illusions, you've got three or four employees.
Yeah.
Your car.
Well, and...
Three or five cars to sell, you're over the...
Well, and so, yeah, so I've got behind the building, there's a couple spots back there that aren't on the pavement, right there. Yeah, see that white truck on the, kind of the upper middle? I bought that, so I can get rid of it. So I actually bought the truck from the neighbor, so I can haul it out of there. And then, so I have two spots back there, one spot in the front, and I think, you know, if, I don't want things to be a problem. So if it looks like it's getting too crowded or people are having trouble and stuff, I don't have to have 10 cars up front for sale. I can have two cars up front for sale, or we can park over at Nick's, or they can walk from their house, or, you know what I mean? I'm not trying to overly complicate everything, and I certainly don't want anyone to have to park on the street because I see how people drive through there, and it's crazy. But yeah, I don't really see it being an issue. If it becomes a concern or something like that, it's certainly something I can remedy.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Stafford. If you'll, please sign the roll right there next to the sheet, so we can get your names spelled correctly. All right, we'll bring this back to the Commission for any other further questions, comments, discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Robinson?
Maybe for Mr. Agard. It seems like in the past we've done some dealership that had some limited parking in our conditions. We limited how many cars they could have for sale. Is that... I think it was just the dealership just right here next to the fire station.
Yeah, the Planning Commission has approved two automobile dealerships. One of them was in the old police station. Another one was in the old glowing embers restaurant, and they were only proposing three parking stalls for display because they were just basically doing online auto sales. And in order to comply with the state requirements, they had to have three dedicated display spaces. I don't recall if the Planning Commission put a condition on the number of stalls that they could have for display. I think they kind of limited that themselves.
All right.
But that's, yeah, that's accurate. There's at least two of those that you've approved in the last year.
I just wonder if we ought to... I wonder if we ought to have, if they have four to five employees, a potential of, I think on your notes it was said, 10 plus. I was just looking at it, but then I lost it. I'm sorry. I don't know, I just wonder if we ought to just limit the amount of sales spots they have, put that as a condition, because they need so many parking spots for their employees and so many for customers, a couple for customers, I don't know.
My question pursuant to that, I don't have an issue with it, but I know that in the first condition that Andrew's put in there, it specifies business-related parking for customers, employees, vehicle display, and automobile repair, shopping contained on-site with no on-street parking. No-on-street parking, doesn't that solve? I don't care what his mix is.
Yeah, I don't think we have to get to...
Personally, the more XKE's he's got out there, the happier I'll be.
Yeah.
My concern with the condition that's put in there is the code already says everything has to be on-site for him, and I don't think it's fair for us to put a condition on his customers not parking on a public street. There's nothing that says you can't have people to your house and they can't park on a public street. And so I think the same thing goes for businesses. If his customers want to park on the street and it's legal to park there, they should be able to park there.
No argument.
And I would concur with that. If that condition says customer parking, I would propose that that be stricken from the motion, because as I mentioned in my presentation, they have the right to park there. My concern was storing vehicles there in the interim.
Okay, and that's fine, but I thought it said customer, and that's where my beef is.
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment about that. I know customers have the right to park on the street, but businesses are required to have customer parking, so irrelevant where they park, the business should be required to provide that, just like any other business.
Right, and that's in the code. It's just that the condition has said customer, and that's where my problem is.
Most businesses can provide parking. Some cannot.
You can.
Right.
But you're correct.
I have another comment, a question. So if this gets approved and goes through, will they have like a site plan that they have to show parking to you guys for staff to review?
Not necessarily, unless you require one.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? This is a good discussion.
Well, I think, another comment. I think this is great to have stuff going into Newtown and to help try to revitalize that area, so I don't want to overly burden somebody that's trying to do something with that part of town, you know? But it's a hard balance to try to get it just right.
Some understanding, if the condition more or less said everything it says but strike the customer's part of it, everybody's going to be in agreement to that.
Yeah, happier. I don't like the condition, but it's already in the city code. But I can see the redundancy makes a little bit of sense to have some teeth to it, but...
Well, and I think we have to look a little bit further down the road, too. If the gentleman that's doing this decides to sell it in five years, who knows what the next guy's going to buy it? It's already permitted business. They might decide to start parking cars on the road and things like that, and then it could come back to us, and then we could pull the conditional use permit correct, and then they would lose their business license until they got their stuff. So it's just one more mechanism to keep them in compliance besides the police having to police it.
Commissioner, I understand you're philosophically exactly where you're coming from. I think the only comment I would make to that is that we, as a city, haven't always had a fantastic record of enforcing those ordinances that are already on the books. And I don't want to expand government, but if we're going to give a conditional use permit out under our authority, I don't mind keeping a little bit of control there.
And there's merit to that school of thought.
Good, great discussion. The applicant, Mr. Stafford, did you have something else? Come up to the podium if you do, please.
Just to clarify, just to put everyone's mind at ease, if you could see my toolbox, I should have taken a picture of my toolbox. When you open up the drawer, every socket has its own individual spot where it sits, and everything's completely beautifully organized, and that's how I am. So it's not going to be mayhem. The one picture he had was from the previous owner where he had the RV and all that stuff over there, and that causes me anxiety. Yeah, so no, it's not going to be run-amok, wild, free-for-all with cars stacked on top of each other. It's going to be this, this, so I should have taken a picture of my toolbox so you can see it. He's seen it. So, yeah, so that's, you know, I just wanted to clarify that, no, it's not going to run amok, it's not going to be 500 things strewn about. It's going to be very nice and beautifully organized, and everybody's going to, in fact, you know, I scolded somebody today because they parked funny, and I said, "Don't do that." But anyway, that's another five cents worth.
Just so you understand, I'm going to go back to what Commissioner Jensen said. Our job is to think about what can happen under this thing, not what we think you were going to do.
Oh, I understand.
The conditional use permit will go with the land, so if you decide to even move across the street and sell this one, we're kind of bound by whatever we do going forward on this.
Yeah, I understand.
That's where he's getting it.
Oh, this is my first one, so I'm all like, you know, dressing nice, I have to clean my fingernails and everything, so, anyway, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion on this particular item here.
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the conditional use permit request by Shane Stafford representing Smitty's Speech Shop to authorize the use of automobile sales and rental to current property application number P-23-836, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report that strike the word "customers" from the condition.
Okay. I've got a motion to approve the conditional use permit by Commissioner Proctor, a second commission from Commissioner Sloan, also with the extra condition of striking the word "customer" out of the condition in there, so it's just be based upon the business itself. Customers will be allowed to use the street if they intend to take this to a table for a vote. Commissioner Hammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goachus?
Aye.
I am Chairman Hamilton, I also vote aye, and that one passes seven to zero. Moves us on to number five on our agenda tonight, is a public hearing and decision on a conditional use permit requested by Travis and Kelly Dunage, if I pronounced that incorrectly, I apologize, to authorize a detached accessory structure that exceeds 8% total lock coverage and exceeds the 15-foot height limit for .18 acres of property located at 857 South, 730 West in the R17 residential zoning district. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, Commissioners. This conditional use permit applies to the property highlighted in red, which is east of 730 West and north of 880 South. I've placed a square, the red square, they're kind of indicating the general location of where they'd like to put the building. That is not by any stretch of the imagination to scale, so it's just a general location. Property is owned R17, as are all of the surrounding properties, and all of the properties in this area are utilized as single-family residential. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to exceed the 8% accessory structure lock coverage restriction. The building they are proposing, I believe, would occupy approximately 12.2% or something of that nature, so it'd be about 4% more than what the ordinance currently allows. The ordinance does permit the Planning Commission with authority to grant a variance to that 8% requirement if it can be determined that the request doesn't create any burdens or impacts to the adjacent properties. In looking at aerial photographs, there are properties in the subdivision that have sheds. I didn't find any of them that were as big as this structure. However, I could not readily identify any issues with what the applicant's proposing in regards to exceeding the 8%. You'll note that there is proposal for a new driveway located to the north. You'll note that there is proposal for a new driveway located to the north of the home. That does create some issues in and of itself, but that is not part of the conditional use permit. That's something that we'll deal with in a, in a different situation. But that's what's being requested in regards to the eight percent. And then the building height, can't really see that on the screen. Hopefully your monitors are a little bit better, but anytime you exceed the 15-foot height requirement, the ordinance also provides the planning commission with authority to grant an exception to that height requirement. We measure building height to the midpoint of roof pitch between the eve and the peak. As you can see on this plan, the building is about 15 feet to the eve and it's about four, 17, or excuse me, about four feet to the peak. So I estimate the building height would be about 17 and a half feet measured to the midpoint, which is about two feet taller than what's required by ordinance. Again, I can't, I could not identify any issues with what's being requested. Maximum building height in the R-17 zone is 35 feet. And so this building is considerably less than that. So staff's recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the basic housekeeping catch-all conditions and also with some additional conditions that there, there's a specific number not to exceed 12 and a half percent lock coverage, not to exceed, um, 17 and a half feet in building heights, just to make sure that they don't see that as carte blanche to go more. And so that's why I put that condition in there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
All right. Let's bring this back to the commission for further questions or comments or discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Goaches?
You know, you, the map shows a proposed pole building, but your, what, what you showed on the screen was garage. So is it a pole building with open sides? You know, I have a, I have a pole barn. I don't have an enclosed barn, but I have a hay cover barn, so I know what that looks like. Is this going to be an enclosed? How come it's, how come it says pole building? Or is it a garage, an enclosed garage?
I think that, that, that alludes to the manner of the construction. So many times we'll see a pole building that goes up and they still put siding on it or they still put exterior surfacing around it. It, it just, it's the manner of the construction of the structure. But it's my, they're, they're intent on enclosing it. It'll be a garage. Good question.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jensen?
On the height, you said, so it's from the eve to the, between the eve and the peak, it's the midpoint.
The midpoint, yep, right in the middle.
So were you considering the eve the top of the fascia board or the bottom of the fascia board?
Uh, the eve is the bottom.
The bottom of the fascia boards were, would actually.
Yeah, so it'd be right in the middle. So technically the peak could be a little bit higher than that.
Okay.
But yeah, that's how the ordinance defines building height, it's the midpoint.
Okay.
Good questions for clarification. Any other questions for staff? All right. This one also does require a public hearing. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this particular item on the garage, please approach the podium, state your name for the record and write your name for the record as well. Seeing no one approach, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this particular item, bring it back to the commission for further action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the conditional use permit request by Travis Dunage for the purpose of a detached accessory structure to exceed the limits that are in there and based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the report dated 31 August 2023.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second from Commissioner Hammer. Commissioner Hammer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goaches?
Aye.
I am Chairman Hamilton. I also vote aye. That one passes seven to zero. Moves us on to number six on our agenda is a decision on a conditional use permit request by Irvah Development to authorize the use of accessory drive-through facility for 2.283 acres of property located at 245 North Main Street in the G.C. General Commercial Zoning District. Uh, this one was tabled from our July 26th Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Agar.
Thank you, Commissioners. So I was not here at this meeting, at the last meeting, uh, so hopefully I get everything right. If not, I know Paul is here and he can correct me if he needs to. But, uh, this is an application for a conditional use permit for a drive-through aisle facility, which in the general commercial zone always requires a CUP. And at the last meeting, uh, the applicant, um, not the applicant, the planning commission tabled the item pending a, a traffic study to determine if, uh, the best arrangement for the, uh, drive-through aisle locations and, uh, whether or not they will, will function in the, in the proposal that they had. The applicant did go get a traffic study done and I did include that report in your, in your packets. I didn't include the index. That would have been an additional 100 pages. I didn't think you needed to have that in there, but, uh, all the conclusions and the summary findings were included. And the applicant came back with a revised site plan. Now, this is not a site plan application, so we're not necessarily scrutinizing the site plan. This is a conditional use permit. But the site plan is pertinent to what the planning commission's considering. And they did rework their site and, uh, this pretty much, in my opinion, resolves some of the issues that, that staff was having with their original proposal. The biggest concern that we had was that vehicle stacking could end up going onto the public street. And we wanted to make sure that they, they oriented their drive-through storage lanes interior to the site. Now, that could create conflicts inside the site, but to be honest, if it's interior and not on public streets, it's not the city's problem. That's the, that's the property owner's problem, developer's problem. And so what they did is they reworked the site and they, for the north building, they moved that building closer to SR-36. The pickup window is now on the west side of the building. And so the vehicle storage lane, as you can see, is highlighted in red. Now, the traffic study provided some counts in regards to how many vehicles they anticipated would be, um, required to store in these, in this lane during the peak hours. And it was between seven and 13 vehicles. They have enough room provided on this one for 10. So they're kind of right in the middle. And again, if there is some overflow vehicle stacking, it's not going to be anywhere near the public street. This also resolves another issue that was in your previous staff report for this item. Um, it takes the drive-through aisle and puts it behind the building, so it's no longer in front of the building. And so we don't have to worry about landscaping or buffering for the drive-through aisle. The other building, which is a, proposed to be a soda shop located a little bit further south, um, they, they included some landscaping that causes the drive aisle to, to turn west and, and store west, again, interior to the site. The, the, the numbers were the same in regards to generating about seven to 13 vehicles during peak hours. This one provides 10 or more. And so we're, we're satisfied that this will keep vehicle storage away from the public streets and interior to the site and will function. The other thing that the traffic study did is it addressed parking. The staff had some questions about the parking. Was there sufficient parking? They did provide data. They did traffic, they did parking counts during different times during the day and per use and determined that during peak hours, only 62 of the spaces, is it 62? I think it was 62 spaces were used and there were 115, 121 provided. And with the, with the new buildings being constructed, uh, they are well over the amount of util, of spaces that are utilized. And they, they are thus requesting the natural adjustment in, uh, the parking ordinance, which allows up to 15% reduction in parking for, for situations such as this. So staff is confident that, uh, what they're proposing will satisfy the parking needs of the development. However, that's not part of the conditional use permit, but it was part of the traffic study, so I wanted to touch on that a little bit. Yeah, I think they, they've put great, great work and done their due diligence into trying to make this, this work in a, in a safe and efficient manner to keep the, uh, vehicle storage on the site. And we are recommending approval with, uh, the conditions listed in your staff report. And happy to answer any questions you might have. I'm sure Paul can touch on things if you need to talk to him as well, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Agar. Let's bring this back to the commission for questions or comments.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Goaches?
With the, the 15% reduction in parking, how does that affect the existing businesses?
Well, the, the traffic study, it, it counted the, the parking with the existed building. So they did, they did the count based upon the parking requirements for the existing businesses. And then they, they did a study in regards to how many of those stalls are actually used during peak hours. And the determination was that for a parking lot that provides 121 parking stalls, only 62 were being utilized at the busiest times. So there's actually ample parking available based upon the usage that currently exists. So with the new structures coming in, there may be a reduction of about seven or eight parking stalls, but that still exceeds the amount of parking stalls that are being utilized. And the code provides what is called a natural adjustment range. And that is for situations such as this where perhaps the code is requiring excessive parking that is, than what is actually needed. And so that allows them to reduce the parking requirement beyond what the ordinance requires by 15%. And they're, they're actually under by 13%. So they, they are within the code parameters.
I've just been to Little Caesar's when Twilla plays football and they have a lot of parking. There's a lot of cars that visit there. So, you know, I would consider that to be a peak time with a lot of visitors, but they do come and go quickly.
You can get busy.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Sloan?
Probably more of a procedural question than anything else. I noticed that, uh, recommending approval, um, we're, we're citing the staff report from July 17th. Have we not incorporated some of the changes subsequent to that? For example, uh, can I find it? Making sure that the stacking took place interior versus by the streets. That's, I don't, I don't have the old package in front of me, so I don't know if that's been changed. But my concern is if we change it up there, do we need to change the, the staff report dating?
You can do that. You can, you can change it to the staff report that's dated.
I'm sorry, yeah, citing number six. Vehicle stacking can be resolved by making some changes in the site plan that were direct vehicle queuing towards the interior of the site and the way from public driveway. So I, I don't remember if that was in our first recommendation or not.
Yeah, I, I removed the condition regarding the landscaping between the buildings and the street, um, but everything else I felt was pertinent. So you can, you can keep it with, or you could just replace the date for, for today's meeting.
I do have just one comment. It has nothing to do with what we're voting on tonight, just to kind of the site plan, just to take into consideration as we move forward. As, as you look at some of the restaurants and, and fast food places we have now and stacking in those areas going to parking lots, restricting people from traffic flow, you don't even want to go down there when, when it's peak hour sometimes. So just to take into consideration some of those thoughts, like I said, has nothing to do with our vote tonight, but it makes me nervous when we're blocking off, uh, a bunch of parking stalls for other businesses, uh, just to queue for, uh, other, other fast food restaurants.
Chairman, that would be my concern, too, is what we would, what we're creating by, of course, not wanting any stacking on SR-36 on Main Street. We're, we're creating a mess in the parking lot by how this can be queued. I mean, I just look at how the extra cars will be right in front of Little Caesar's and the smoke shop and go around if the site plan were to be approved. And then the stacking from the soda shop blocks all of those parking stalls. And like, we've talked about, how, how does that affect getting in and out of those other businesses that are already existing? I think it creates a disaster.
Those, those are concerns that staff has expressed to the applicant as well. We're well aware of that.
Any other questions or comments for staff?
A comment, I had to go along with what you guys were saying. I, I understand that, but it's my understanding that they don't necessarily own the businesses, but they own all this property, right? This developer owns.
I believe so.
So, I mean, I have a hard time telling somebody they can't do what they want with their property, you know, at the same time, because I, I think it will be a mess. I agree with that. But, you know, I drive a semi-big truck like, you know, Chairman Hamilton does and there's a lot of places I just won't go. And that's just how it is, you know? And, but I respect them to have their parking lot the way they want and if it fits in the code and meets what it needs to be, then, yeah, I think it's okay.
I'll echo that as well, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I won't, I won't drive in downtown Salt Lake because of it.
Yeah. Market will take care of those businesses or not, and so they'll have to fix things accordingly, so.
Lot of traffic to feed the businesses, but if they're not stopping. But you're, you're right. Just a discussion. It doesn't, like I said, it has nothing that pertains to the vote tonight, so good discussion on that.
I have another question for Andrew.
Yes, please.
If that's okay. Andrew, you know, when we're talking about other, impacting other businesses and where we expect people to queue, is there a requirement for signage to direct people how to park and come in and out? No?
There's not a requirement by code that they put up a certain type of signage. They just have to meet the parameters of the sign ordinance. When Paul and I do our site plan review, we try to direct them to, to install things of that nature, but there isn't an ordinance mandate behind it. So our, our authority is limited in that regard.
And maybe the applicant can answer that question, whether or not they have a plan for that.
Yeah, signage is always good. When people pay attention to it, though, that's another story, so. Any other further questions for staff?
I have a question, I guess for more, maybe for city council.
They're busy.
Maybe they're not listening.
They're listening. Reese is always listening.
City council, um, members, is there any, uh, have you had any discussions about, um, drive-through businesses in our city? I'm, I'm thinking of another city in Salt Lake, um, that has, I maybe put a moratorium on drive-throughs as they try to figure it out there in the Sugar House area. And before we maybe create something that we're not sure about, is, is, do you have, have you had any discussions about talking about anything like that?
We were having one right here, besides that. No. I think we are a little bit different in Sugar House in the fact that Sugar House actually removed all their parking requirements at all. So they have a bigger dis, discussion. I was going to say mess, but a bigger discussion overall, you know, philosophy, philosophy going on right now. But I, as we were just chit-chatting here, it's definitely something I think we should look at because I would echo all of your concerns. There are places I don't go either because of the mess it creates inside the parking lot. So sad for the businesses, but.
Good discussion tonight. Council, staff and commissions all on the same page with their concerns, so that's good. So those concerns really don't have much to do with our vote for the conditional use unless there's a safety issue or something that we cannot mitigate or control, so. Any other further discussion or comments or questions for staff?
I have one more question.
Yes, Commissioner Goaches?
Um, in the map, it shows just kind of in the back of the parking, there's just a little square with, and I'm just not sure what that is. Is that the taco cart?
I think that's a dumpster enclosure.
Oh, okay. So the taco cart goes away.
I'll figure that out. Tell them to come talk to me. I'll figure that out for them. All right. With that having been said, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on this one.
Is the applicant here to address?
We can bring the applicant up. Is the applicant here tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah? You want to come up and address some of these questions? Yeah, if you would please, uh, say your name for the record, then when you're finished, you can go ahead and write it down.
My name's Elliot Abel with Irvah Development. I've been assisting in the iterations of this site plan, uh, from the feedback from the planning commission and, uh, this is in our second meeting. When it comes to the concern about signage, uh, we are absolutely more than willing to accommodate both signage solutions and even speak to the operators of the business about, and even speak to the operators of the business about expediting the drive-through process potentially like by designating a parking wait area. Because we did recognize the traffic flow issue. Actually, there was a design that we had before this that enclosed the entire driveline with landscaping. And we actually reconfigured a lot of this to open up the landscaping and might be able to take it a bit further if we can still meet our landscaping requirements to open up the flow. In the middle there was, we wanted to increase the probability of pull-through spots so people could pull directly through just in case there was queuing behind them. But want to express willingness to continue to iterate this landscaping plan to possibly open up the flow of parking to provide more options to exit the parking aisles. Absolutely. And then the, what was the other?
Signage.
Signage, yes. So signage and flow arrows on the ground in designated parking areas, I think we can work that in.
Okay.
Yes. There's something else I wanted to say, but I just draw a blank right now.
How about the queuing? Do you want to talk about the queuing?
Yes.
What might affect other businesses?
So we've spoken with the operators of this business, and they asked for seven parking stalls for the average amount that they have in their other locations. And we wanted to provide something in excess of that in order to kind of alleviate any parking concerns. I do believe also that the uses up north and down south would have different hours of operations. Therefore, kind of on average, the north queue would have a morning type of queue, and the south queue would have more of a midday and afternoon type of queue. So when we were kind of determining which drive-through users we wanted to go forward with, we took hours into consideration as well. With the flow causing traffic, I think landscaping is the number one solution in front of us, and maybe configuring it so that there's more outlets if we can have our engineers work that one out.
Any other further questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I do?
Yes.
There are two businesses, a soda shop, and you haven't defined what the other one is. Is there customer seating inside these buildings, either one or both?
So it's a coffee, it's a coffee shop that's gonna be going in there, and they would have five to 10 seats inside.
Okay.
And I believe when we looked at our parking analysis for the enclosed parking spaces up against the south end of the north building and then the enclosed parking space in that landscaping area, that building should park itself on that portion of the lot.
Okay, so one's coffee and one's soda.
Mm-hmm.
I see, okay.
And Yanelli with the taco truck, I talk to her all the time, and she actually wants a physical location. So we've been working with her to try to find something.
Oh, that's great.
That's still close to this area, so we're shopping for her and we talk to her all the time.
You know, good neighbor.
Yes.
Sounds to me like you're taking all the businesses' interest into consideration and doing your due diligence to help them out as much as possible.
I've played a role in managing that property for the last seven years.
That's good to know. That's good to know. Keep it up.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, any other further questions for the applicant? All right, Mr. Abel, I appreciate it. You'll go ahead and write your name for the record there. All right, let's bring this back to the commission for further action now.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Jensen?
I move we approve the conditional use permit requested by Elliot Abel representing IRVA Development to authorize the use of accessory drive-through facility for property located at 245 North Main Street, application number P 23-605, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated July 17th, 2023.
Got a motion to approve from Commissioner Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Sloan.
Do we need to change the date on that report?
Uh, we can change the date on the report, or we can emphasize on six. That's in the conditions already.
If it's there, that's fine.
What about signage?
If we can't enforce it, then site plan. It'll be on the site plan, yeah. Do you want to change your motion to correct the date on there to date the size number six?
Either or, I think. So the staff report dated September 13th, 2023? That's the date, right?
That worked for you.
I'm good with that, too.
Okay. Change the staff report to date September 13th, and Commissioner Sloan is good with that, too, with his second. Take this to the table. Commissioner Hammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goaches?
Aye.
I am Chairman Hamilton. I vote aye. That one passes seven to zero. Moves us on to number seven, city council reports.
We didn't have a meeting because we had a conference for you Tallahassee Cities and Towns, so I don't have anything to report from the meeting, but I will just say one thing, there was a common theme at our conference with, and it's with all city councils and recorders from across the state, was a lot about collaboration and collaborating city staff, city council, planning commission, and even with the developers that come into the city so that you have clear understanding, clear goals, clear vision. And I think we have some work to do in our city because nothing is perfect ever. But I do think that we have really good collaboration between staff, city council, and planning commission for sure. So I just wanted to express appreciation for that. I think we a lot of times have the same vision and are thinking the same things. And I know the city council members at least read the minutes, if not watch the planning commission meetings also. We also try to report at our meetings, you know, what's going on here, and then we try and bring that back to you so that we can have a clear goals and move our city forward in the best way possible. And I just appreciate that collaboration with you all.
We do, too. That's why we like it. Any questions for city council? Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, number eight on our agenda is a review and approval of planning commission minutes, meeting, commission minutes for the meeting held on August 23rd, 2023. Are there any corrections or additions that need to be made? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes.
Got a motion to approve from Commissioner Proctor. The chair will go ahead and second. Commissioner Hammer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goaches?
Aye.
I am Chairman Hamilton. I also vote aye. That one passes seven to zero. Moves us on to number nine on our agenda is our planning commission training on Twilla City's ordinance applicable to the planning commission's responsibilities.
Okay, so a few weeks ago, the planning commission gave me some training topics that they were interested in. One of those was Twilla City's ordinances and how it applies to the planning commission, where to find them, how they work, how they function, and so forth. And I thought, that's training I can put together pretty simply. So hopefully I don't bore you to death. There really isn't an entertaining way to go over the ordinances and how it works, so I'm just gonna dive into it, and hopefully you stay awake, hopefully I stay awake, and if not, throw something at me. But it's good to go over the code. It's good to go over how it's structured, how it works, how to find the information that we need, especially how it pertains to the planning commission. One thing I've learned in putting this presentation together is the planning commission has a lot of work to do. There's a lot of responsibility in the code for the planning commission. And you'll see as we go through that how the code really relies on the planning commission to oversee development throughout the city and how important your role is. There are 11 titles in our city code, and they are listed here. The title involves chapters. There's numerous chapters in each code, and each chapter involves sections. And each one of these codes creates or requires a city division or department to oversee it, to execute it, and to make sure that it's being upheld and fulfilled. So the first title, Title I, it establishes the various offices and officers operating within the city. Some of those offices are city council, city mayor, city recorder. Now, those offices are also created by the city charter. And so this ordinance doesn't create those positions, but it does enumerate the powers and duties of those various bodies and those various officials. This is not all of them. For the sake of time, I don't want to get into everything, but that's a pretty general idea of what Title I does. So let me ask the planning commission a question. Who enforces or who is responsible with overseeing the administration of Title I?
The mayor?
Attorney.
The mayor? I don't know for sure. I mean, I'm gonna be learning this with you guys as well. When we go to these meetings, a lot of times the city council, the mayor look to the attorney's office to make sure things are being done correctly. I don't really know for sure. It could be a whole bunch of many different authorities in the city making sure this title is enforced. Title II is the section or the ordinance that establishes the various governing boards within the city. Title II is what creates and authorizes a planning commission. It also authorizes an employee grievance appeal board, Twilla Valley Museum Advisory Board, and other boards. Well, that little document I gave you was printed out by Roger, and it just goes over all the titles and the chapters. Title II also establishes a public library, and it establishes criteria for granting variances. I think the city council and the mayor have pretty good authority over the administration of this code as they are the ones that select the boards, the, all of you have been selected and appointed by the city council and by the mayor, similar with other boards throughout the city. However, there is one question in regards to Title II. Do variances involve the planning commission? Do you guys ever approve variances?
Yeah, we just did tonight.
You just did one tonight, right? The planning commission can be involved with variance requests as long as the ordinance grants you the authority to do that. Any other variance where the planning commission is not specifically listed as the authority goes to the city's administrative hearing officer, who's a gentleman by the name of Jim Tanner. So if someone comes into the office and says, I want to have a, I don't like having a 25-foot setback in my front yard. I want a variance. He would apply, and he would go to the administrative hearing officer, and he would have to present his case to the hearing officer for that variance. Planning commission is not involved in those. So only when the ordinance specifically authorizes you, then you can be involved in variance requests. And that's what Title II is involved in. Title III establishes a fire department. Establishes fire department personnel, duties and powers, establishes regulations for fireworks, flammable liquids, fire alarms, and enforcement and abatement. Does the planning commission have any involvement in Title III?
The conditional use permits?
Good point. There's some indirect involvement there. But in regards to the establishment and administration of this code, typically I would say not. That falls to the fire department through their inspectors and so forth. I would say the city council, mayor, and fire department are usually the ones that enforce or keep this ordinance. Title IV establishes regulations involving the construction of buildings and streets, such as building, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical codes. It also establishes the office of the building official, you know as Brad Alder. Really good guy, does a good job in his capacity. It also governs swimming pools for residential properties and establishes road, bridges, and sidewalk construction. This code also establishes development impact fees, which we collect when a new development comes in to help offset the impact of development on the city's infrastructure. Who's in charge with administering Title IV? What do you think?
Be your office, wouldn't it?
The building department, which is part of the community development department. Yeah, they administer the building code and all the building code requirements. The Twilla City Building Department, Public Works Department, and Mr. Hanson, our city engineer. They oversee roads and bridges, and the building department oversees all the building codes for structures and plumbing and so forth. So essentially, the community development department does a lot of that. Title V establishes all regulations regarding commercial business licenses in Twilla City. So if a business wants to come to the city, any kind of business, it has to meet the regulations found in this code. There's all kinds of businesses. This is just a small list, but there are many varieties of business that need to be, need to have a business license when they come to the city. Who administers this code?
Community development.
Community development. The business license specialist, her name is Denise Hall. And whenever someone needs a business license, they go to her and work through her. She then requires other inspections, the fire inspectors, the building department, the health department, the planning and zoning, to go out and make sure those businesses conform with all those regulations. That's all found in Title V. Title VI establishes regulation regarding enforcement of animal issues in Twilla City, such as licensing nuisance animals, impounds, regulatory permits for kennels, cruelty to animals, and rabies control and so forth. What does the planning commission think, who do you think enforces this code?
Part of its parks department and health department, too, is rabies.
Yep, police department and animal control. The animal control is actually a division of the police department, so. Title VII, my favorite code, establishes the uniform zoning and development code for Twilla City. This is the code that establishes the criteria and processes for zoning map amendments, site plans, site plan amendments, conditional use permits, home occupation, fences, residential design, subdivisions, signs, and just about anything that involves new development, okay? Who oversees this code?
Community development.
Any guesses?
Planning. And planning.
The Twilla City Planning Commission, Twilla City Council, the city planner, the community development director, and I'm gonna add the city engineer. Paul is very much involved in the Title VII as well. So there's a lot of people overseeing this code, and as you can see, the planning commission is involved with that. Title VIII establishes standards to maintain health and sanitation, garbage collection, nuisance abatement, wastewater treatment, outdoor smoking, special events, and trees. Who do you think administers this code?
Some parks and rent, some community development.
Public Works.
I'm gonna say Twilla, the city finance department, they collect a lot of the fees and administer the fees for the water systems and the sewer systems and the trash removal. Public Works Department, they do a lot of that, and then the police department as well. Could be other departments involved as well. I mean, there's a lot of departments that do a lot of things. Title IX establishes services that are provided by the city to its residents, such as cemetery, billing for utilities, water supply, and reclaim, water reclamation. This one would be administered by the city's parks department, finance department, and public works. Title X establishes regulation regarding traffic and public rights away. So if there are parking issues, as Commissioner Robinson mentioned tonight during that item, if there are parking issues, this would be the ordinance that would address those street parking issues. The police department is the one that enforces this code. So if there's a parking issue on the street, community development department has nothing to do with that. That's a police department issue. And then Title XI establishes the Twilla City Criminal Code, such as crime, noise control, and graffiti. You can probably guess who enforces this code. The city attorney's office and the police department. So each one of these titles creates a need for a department. And you can probably guess which Twilla City code the planning commission is directly involved in. That's Title VII. There are some other mentions of the planning commission in other codes, but primarily it's Title VII where the planning commission is regularly involved. And putting this together, as I mentioned, I was surprised how much the planning commission is mentioned. So I will quickly go through Title VII and explain all the planning commissions mentioned in these. Title VII, Chapter I, is our general provisions code. This is the, just kind of the legal mumbo jumbo of the code. It involves interpretations and conflicts and all those things that the city attorney's office is regularly going to be involved in. It's not something the planning commission's gonna really be doing much with. It's not something the city staff does anything with. It's just something the city attorney puts in there in case that there's a conflict with the code that it can be addressed. Title VII, Chapter Ia, is a fairly important code for the planning commission. This is the code that lays out the process for zoning map amendments, land use map amendments, and text amendments. So if someone wants to change their zoning map, someone wants to change the land use map, someone wants to change the code, this ordinance basically states that they have to go to the planning commission for a recommendation and a public hearing, and then to city council for a final decision. So this code has a lot of, is very important for the planning commission's responsibilities, as well as the city council. Jumping back to Title VII, Chapter I, there is an ordinance, it's Section 7-1-5 definitions, which is a critical section for this, for my department, the community development department, as well as the planning commission. This definition section is very extensive, and this is where the ordinance defines a particular use. So if Commissioner Hamilton comes in and says, I want to know what the code defines, how the code defines a restaurant, we would open up definitions and we would look to see how the code defines a restaurant. And then we, or I as a city planner, I utilize this code almost every day because anytime a business comes in and they want to open in a certain location, I have to categorize that business under a specific use. And so I need to know what the definition is for that use. So if someone wants to go to the industrial zone and build hats made out of feathers, I have to find out, I have to categorize that business, okay? Is it, doesn't it involve? Okay, is it ... doesn't involve any welding? It's probably just light manufacturing. So I'll bring up this definitions code and I'll read the definition for light manufacturing. And then I'll determine whether or not that business meets that definition. So it's a very important section in our code, one that we reference quite a bit, just to make sure that all the uses and so forth are defined properly in our code. So you may end up having to go to that one time you have any questions about what a ... how to define a particular use or standard, the definitions section will have a lot of that. Title VII, Chapter III is the code that governs non-conforming uses. We dealt with one of those tonight, Mr. Reese's dental office. The purpose of a non-conforming ordinance is to eliminate non-conforming uses. We don't want to keep them. We want them to be eliminated. However, the code does acknowledge that these things were built before city ordinances and city codes were changed and allows them to exist in perpetuity, but it does place some restrictions on it. This does not involve the planning commission. There isn't any language in there for the planning commission. Title VII, Chapter IV is our off-street parking ordinance, and this is the ordinance that basically governs everything and anything parking. It doesn't matter if it's commercial property or residential property. It has to adhere to the standards of this ordinance. This ordinance establishes parking stall size, aisle widths, number of parking stalls, landscaping in the parking areas. And the ordinance does provide planning commission with authority to approve deviations to the parking standards. You guys just looked at one tonight. The ordinance does give you the authority to do that. The ordinance also gives the planning commission authority to vary from the approved paving surfaces. I believe you had one of those on your agenda. You haven't made a decision on that one yet, but anytime anybody wants to do a gravel parking lot or anything other than concrete or cement, it has to come to the planning commission to get that approval. And the planning commission also has authority to approve parking lots in residential zones. So if somebody wanted to use a residential property exclusively for parking, the planning commission can approve that. You have that authority. Title VII, Chapter V, Conditional Use. This is the ordinance that grants the planning commission the sole authority as approving conditional use permits. Also establishes our zoning, our noticing requirements, public hearings, finding of facts, revocations, all those things. We talked a little bit about that earlier tonight, that this is the ordinance that gives the planning commission the authority to revoke a conditional use permit. Title VII, Chapter VI is our planned unit development overlay, and I apologize for the spelling errors. I actually read through this twice after I wrote it, and then I still find errors. I don't have spell check in the program that I use. But this code requires the planning commission to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council on any proposed PUD. Again, more planning commission involvement. Mobile home parks are defined in Title VII, Chapter VIII. There is language in there for the ... that requires the planning commission. However, none of our zones allow mobile home parks anymore, so it's not something that's really kind of a moot point, but if we ever did change our zones to allow mobile home parks, the planning commission would be involved in the approval of those. Recreational vehicles and recreational vehicle parks, our ordinance does permit those in industrial zones, and the ordinance does require that the planning commission approve a site plan for any RV park. So more responsibility from the planning commission. Title VII, Chapter XI is a critical ordinance for the planning commission. This is our design review. This is the code that establishes the planning commission as the sole review authority for site plans. And you've seen a lot of these, especially multifamily residential site plans. They bring them to you all the time. Establishes you as the authority and establishes the planning commission also as an extension authority. So a site plan is good for one year. You can get close to one year without any activity. It can expire. They can come back to the planning commission and say, "I want an extension for six months." So you also have that authority there. Title VII, Chapter XIa is the design standards for our multifamily residential developments. I bring these to you all the time. These are the criteria basically described in Title VII, Chapter XI that you need to confirm before you approve a site plan. And there's also some language in this code that allows you to make a recommendation on a deviation from the established design criteria. You heard one of those recently. Okay, the townhouses down south want to get rid of the brick requirement. And then Title VII, Chapter XII is our sensitive area overlay zoning. This code specifies specific design and construction criteria for properties located in what are considered sensitive areas, the foothills, places near a stream, or, you know, whatever could be determined as sensitive areas. The planning commission has authority under this ordinance to review and approve developments that are proposed for the ... in that overlay. Don't have that ... It doesn't happen very often, but it's there, and we'll probably see one sometime in the future. Title VII, Chapter XIII is just a code that establishes the zones and sets criteria for locating the zone boundaries. More of a housekeeping ordinance. Chapter XIV is an important ordinance. It's the residential zoning district ordinance. This ordinance creates the infill area overlay district. It also creates or lists the permitted uses. It also governs accessory buildings and porches, and governs farm animals, pets, and apiaries, and landscaping. This code has what they call ... what we call tables. And so if you're looking through the code and you find ... you decide you want to know what use you can do on your property, you need to refer to these tables. So if you have a property that's located in the R17 zone and you want to put a two-family dwelling on that property, you open up this table. You're not going to find any language in the body of the code. You're going to have to go to these tables. So you find the R17 column and you go down to the two-family dwelling row, and you'll see that there's a P there. A P means that it's permitted. So you can do a two-family dwelling in an R17 zone. That's how you would determine the use. And this use ... this list is a lot more expansive than what I have here. But any use that could occur in the residential zone would be on this table. If it's not on this table, it's not permitted. Can't do it. Also, if it doesn't have a C or a P, it's not permitted. So if it has the P, it's permitted. If it has the C, it's ...
Conditional.
Conditional. Has to come to the planning commission to get authority, to get approval. Table III is our site planning and development standards. So if you had a lot in the R110 zone and you wanted to develop that lot, and you wanted to know if you had the necessary lot width, you'd open up this table and say, "Okay, what's the lot width for a lot in the R110 zone?" So you'd find the R110 column, the minimum lot width row, and you'd see that it's 85 feet. So that's how we determine our development standards for residential is with these ... with this table. And then if you had ... if you're doing multifamily, you needed to determine the finished dwelling space for a unit. You go to this table and you'd look at the number of parking stalls or how you have your parking, and you could see the minimum finished dwelling space is based upon the amount of parking or the type of parking you provide. So that's how the residential zoning is structured. Section 7-14-6, Accessory Structures Requirements grants the planning commission with authority to approve deviations to building heights and exceptions to lot coverage, which you approved tonight. So there's another variance the planning commission has authority to do, but that's found in the accessory structures ordinance. Title VII, Chapter 14a is the ordinance that authorizes accessory dwelling units on established residential properties. So if you meet the criteria based on lot size and existing home on the property, this is the ordinance you would refer to to construct an ADU. We've had the ordinance on the books for a couple of years now, and I don't think we've had one ADU built. We hope ... we'd hope we'd have more success with that. We've had a lot of interior basement ADUs, but none of the detached accessory dwelling units. But it's there in case somebody wants to do it. Title VII, Chapters 15 and 15a are the ordinances that govern residential facilities for persons with a disability and elderly persons. This ordinance also requires that these facilities be approved by the planning commission with a conditional use permit. Title VII, Chapter 16, Part I, is the zoning that establishes our commercial districts, the purposes for the commercial districts and the overlays. Really not much in this code that involves the planning commission or just about anybody else. It's just more of a, here's the code, here's what its purpose is. Every now and then, I'll slap something like that in your staff reports, like there's a section in your report that says "purpose." I go right to the code, copy it, and paste it right into the report. So that's where I get that language from. Title VII, Chapter 16, Part II, however, is a very critical part of our code. This is the code that governs commercial development, and it is divided into three tables, Tables I, II, and III. So similar to the residential table, if you're a business owner and you want to come into the city and you want to do some accessory outside storage, you would go to this table. There's no language in the body of the text or the text body. It's all in the table. So you come to this table and you find your zone. Okay, I have property zone, general commercial. I want to do accessory outside storage. You meet ... you match those up. Bang, you got C, which is a conditional use permit. So you have to go to the planning commission. If the use is not included on the table, can't do it. If the use is not listed as P or a C, can't do it. And occasionally, we'll get applications to change the text and add a use to the table or add a P or a C to the table so they can do a certain use in the zone. The planning commission has seen a few of those come through. One thing you'll note on these table of commercial uses is there's often a reference to notes. So when you find your use and you see a note, you then are referred to the bottom of the table where you'll find a list of notes. And these notes add additional language. Let's say you wanted to do a tobacco retail. You'll find that on the tobacco retail, there's a note that refers you to Section 5. And Section 5 has a lot of language concerning distance separation. You can't be next to a school. You can't be next to a park. You can't be next to a residential zone. So there's a lot more language in regards to limiting the uses. You'll note that Section 4 is regarding the conditional uses and accessory outdoor storage. There's also notes in there for landscaping. This is where our street tree requirement comes from for commercial properties is through these notes on these commercial tables. When a property wants to develop in the general commercial zone, we refer them to Table II, Table of Development Standards. This is the table that determines lot width, lot size, building height. And each zone has their own different criteria. So you would find your particular zone and then your particular need for ... in this case, if you had property located in the industrial zone and you wanted to do ... find out what minimum lot width is, and the industrial zone would be 80 feet at the front setback. But you also note that in some of these boxes, it has reference to the planning commission. When it has reference to the planning commission in this table, that's what we call a design review element, and that is when they can request a reduction in setback. For example, a front yard setback typically is 30 feet. However, the ordinance authorizes the planning commission to grant a reduction to 20 feet. So sometimes we'll get an applicant that maybe they can't make it work. They can't make it fit. So, well, you can go to the planning commission and request a reduced setback. We don't get a lot of those requests, but they do happen from time to time. Again, the planning commission has that authority to do that. And then this code also sends you down to a note section as well. So if you're ever looking through the table, just always be aware of those notes. They always have additional language. Title VII, Chapter 16a authorizes the creation of commercial special districts. Planning commission is designated as a recommendation authority for a proposed CSD to the city council. Haven't seen very many of these, but it's there.
Can I ask you a question on that, Andrew?
Yeah.
On that commercial special district?
Uh-huh.
Are those taxing entities? Can that be a taxing entity?
No, it's strictly a zoning. It's just a zone. All they do is write their own zoning code.
You know, just reminded of a request Lexington Greens didn't want to have an HOA. They wanted to have a special district. I didn't know if that ...
Yeah, this has nothing to do with taxation. It's all just zoning. Tried to pass one a little while ago with the Tulle City Business Park. I don't know if you recall that, but we determined that it was not appropriate for industrial uses, and we ended up just going with the zoning change. But we have had one come through, but I haven't had anybody external to the city apply for one of these yet. Title VII, Chapter 19 is a very important ordinance. This governs all and anything related to the subdivision of land and properties, and involves preliminary subdivision plans, final subdivision plaits, minor subdivisions, and plat amendments. Planning commission sees preliminary subdivisions. Planning commission sees minor subdivisions. Planning commission sees subdivision plat amendments. You do not see final plaits. However, the chair signs the final plaits. And this is the ordinance that grants the authority to the planning commission for all of those responsibilities. Chapter 20 is the condominium approval procedure ordinance. You've seen a couple of these come through. We had one for the Harris Community Village and for the Douglas Orthopedic. Those will be coming back to you in the future, but this establishes the planning commission as a number-one conceptual approval and also as a recommendation to the city council for the condominium plat approval. Chapter 24 is our annexation ordinance. This also requires the planning commission to not only hold a public hearing and make a recommendation, but you are also required to sign an annexation plat. And I believe all of you have to sign it. So an annexation plat comes through the ordinance, requires the planning commission to not only sign but to approve it, or recommend ... make a recommendation. If you approve it, you sign it. If you don't approve it, you don't sign it. Title VII, Chapter 25 is our sign ordinance. This is the ordinance that governs anything and everything related to commercial signage and some residential in the terms of home occupations. Planning commission is generally not involved in signage issues unless there is an amendment proposed to the sign code. Chapter 26 is water rights. This is the ordinance that establishes the water dedication requirement for all new development, commercial and residential. Planning commission has no involvement in the enforcement of this ordinance either, but this is a critical part of our development review process. Chapter 27 is personal wireless telecommunications facilities. So if somebody wants to build a cell phone monopole, mono tower, this is the ordinance that would govern that. This ordinance sets standards for appropriate separation from residential structures and property lines and tower height limitations, and the planning commission may be required to approve these facilities if a conditional use permit is required. So you have some involvement with these as well. Okay, so that's the code. That's Tulle City Code, Title VII, Uniform Zoning. As you can see, you guys are very critical to the administration of this code. So we need you here. We appreciate the job that you do. You keep it moving along, keep it moving forward. How do you access the city code? There's been some recent changes to the city's website and been some questions about how to get there and what to do when you get there. There's three ways you can access the city code. You can contact the city planner or the development director and get the code from them. I'd be happy to send you a PDF of the code if you needed that, or just tell you what the code says. The other way is to contact the city attorney's office. City attorney is actually the keeper of the code, so anytime a code revision is made, they have staff that update the code, post the code to the website, create new PDFs with updated codes. So they could give you the latest and greatest of the city code. Because even though you're just involved with Title VII, there's 11 titles that occasionally get amended and changed. And so I wouldn't know anything about the other 10 codes, primarily just Title VII, but that's one way you can do it. And then the city code is available on the city's website at www.tullicity.org. So if you log into the website, the way that I always get to it is at the top, there is a government tab, and it's highlighted and circled in yellow. I just click on that tab, and it'll take me to the government page. On the left-hand side, there's a link to the code. You just click on that, and it'll take you to the list of codes. And if you want to look at something in Title VII, you click on the Title VII, and it'll take you ... it'll scroll you down to Title VII, and then you just click on each chapter, and it'll bring up the sections in each code. And this is readily updated. So when a code amendment is passed, text amendment is passed, the attorney's office readily updates this. So this is where I go for the latest and greatest, most up-to-date code, is the city's website. I don't even mess with paper codes. So it's just always there. When I can't get to it, I go into a state of cognitive dissonance, but usually they get it fixed up pretty quick. So I also try to put in the staff report references to the city code. There's a section in the staff report that is usually listed the criteria for ... There's a section in the staff report that is usually listed the criteria for approval. This may not include everything that the planning commission is responsible for in a particular item, but I always try to include these in there just for the planning commission's reference, if they want to know what their authority is on a particular item. So that's all I have in regards to the city code. I hope that that, I know Commissioner Jensen had asked about this. I hope that that's informative for you. It's always good to know what's in our code and how it's structured. I've learned quite a bit just doing this little exercise. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you. I see you're all still awake.
If the public gets older, continuing it...
It's a big code. There's a lot of language in there, and it's a lot to learn, it's a lot to remember. Admittedly, I have to say that I have to constantly update myself on it because you forget things. It's a big code. There's a lot there.
Thank you. Thought it was very good.
Thank you for your time. If you, don't forget to sign the training log on your way out so we can give you credit for that. And, thanks.
All right, we'll bring this back to the commission. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
About six of them.
I got six of them. Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.